Okay, trustees, we are now reconvening the February sixth Board of Trustees agenda. We are picking up our agenda with action item number twenty-five oh two. Slightly out of order, but we're going to take the permitted interaction group proposed agenda item first. So this agenda item, item number twenty-five oh two is to request to establish a permitted interaction group, otherwise known as a PIG, to investigate the United States Army's and the state of Hawaii's progress in the Army Training Land Retention Efforts and to inform the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and the Board of Trustees on how the Office of Hawaiian Affairs might contribute to the state's decision-making on the future of these leased lands pursuant to Hawaii revised statutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a mo- mo- motion we seconded at this time. Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item before we do trustee discussion?
There is no one signed up for this.
No one signed up, okay. So there's no one signed up at this time, we'll bring it to the table and I'd like to introduce. First, we have Ke Haou here, our Chief Operations Officer, as well as Everett Ota, General Counsel for OHA. And so let's turn it over to Everett to give a brief overview on this proposed action.
Okay, uh, thank you Chair Kahle and good afternoon trustees. So this is just a per- the creation of a permitted interaction group, which allows for members of the permitted interaction group to meet and have discussions on a matter involving board business, but which is separated via the permitted interaction group process or meetings and investigations, which will be subsequently brought back before this board at later meetings for both the report out and decision-making thereafter. So this is to look at the Army retention plans for lands that are currently leased. These are state of Hawaii owned lands that are under long-term leases with the US Army for military operations and training purposes. These lands are set, the leases for those lands are set to expire in 2029. So the state and Army are engaged in negotiations for what happens beyond the expiration of those leases. So this would be a permitted interaction group to investigate what is happening with those lease efforts and then to report back on what the board might want to do with regard to those lands.
Okay, trustees, any questions?
I don't have a question, but did administration inform you that you're able to make those appointments today? Because you can't.
And you're referring to the?
The your four people for the PIG.
On page two of seven, the membership? Membership of the PIG is proposed as follows?
Yeah.
And what is your?
No.
What's the question?
I thought that you would make the appointment so that we can approve it as part of this action item.
You know what? This is the first PIG that I'm overseeing, so I'm learning here too, so.
Right, so I'm just sharing with you that that is permitted.
Okay.
Because that's been the the process that we've gone through.
Okay, you're referring to members of the administration that would be part of the PIG? Or the actual trustees that are part of the PIG?
Trustees.
Okay.
Because the trustees are the voting members.
Right.
The administration is just to do the work.
Okay.
So.
So the current, the proposed members of the PIG, which we can include up to four, is myself and trustee Galateria, trustee Susan, trustee Alapa. And so is that?
That's fine.
Okay.
As long as nobody feels they're in conflict.
Okay, I understand now. Okay. Anyone have anything else? Sure, yeah.
I was wondering about, you know, there was discussion today about the putting together the commission for commission for our Hawaiian language and support of that. And I was wondering if another, another way about that, about this is to for a commission to be formed, whether it be with the federal delegation as their, they, I believe would be a part of the conversation, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs of state, even possibly, like it was mentioned earlier, the various county councils throughout the state. And another thought too is would it make sense before we form a permitted interaction group to have like what is being done with the land transfer, land transfer conversation for administration to do a full comprehensive set of due diligence and then present that to the board to see how to go forward and provide that guidance for a permitted interaction group, if it still makes sense?
Questions, Ke Haou?
Kalomai, no, no questions, just some comments. So we have been doing some work in the military leases on that work. We've been working with Sheri Broder to start to kind of review some of the, I guess, incoming leases, provide some responses. So we've been having some discussion. I, I can't recall if one of the trustees has been a part of these meetings. But they've been, we've been trying to have them monthly. We also did, RNE has done kind of an inventory of leases in Hawaii of what's currently held by the military. So there is, I guess my point is there is some work that has happened and we would be happy to, to share that, you know, with the, with the group. But we are also in a process of discovering and analyzing and, and kind of figuring out our way forward. I would ask if Everett wants to add anything about our ongoing meetings on military leases?
That's okay, Everett. Um, I think so the opportunity for us to create an investigative PIG is the opportunity to be able to put four trustees together to gather as much information as possible from the different relevant parties, which we really haven't done at this up to, up until now. You know, OHA hasn't taken any like major proactive role in asserting our rights as basically the stewards and the protectors of the public trust, which encompass ceded lands or former kingdom lands that is potentially up for negotiation. So you know, the Army has started this almost, almost a decade ago and, and they are getting to the point where decisions are being made and, and we are not at the table at that, those decisions. You know, there's out of the almost 220,000 acres of lands that the United States Military controls, of which, the majority of which are federal lands, 46,000 of those acres are leased lands that the military has and has had sixty-five year leases since nineteen sixty-four. And they lease about 46,000 acres. The Air Force has leases, the Army has leases, the Navy has leases. All of those leases are coming up for renewal, majority of which in 2029, there's one in 2028 and the last one is in 2031. The most important ones are the ones that have gotten the most visibility, which is the Makua Valley and the Makua Training Lands, Makua Military Reservation in Waianae, the Pohakula Training Area Lands on Hawaii Island, the Po'amohoa Training Lands, which are on the North Shore. And so the opportunity for OHA and this PIG to gather as much information as possible, bring that back to the board, I think at that point, considering creating a negotiating PIG so that OHA can then negotiate its position with the state of Hawaii, the DLNR, Office of the Governor, US Army Garrison Hawaii, US Army Pacific is going to be really important. And right now that, that's not happening. So this gives us the opportunity to do that and work in tandem with the administration.
Did Sheri Broder recommend that a permitted interaction group be formed and that would be the most efficient way forward? Was that based on her advice?
Not to my knowledge.
No, this was not a recommendation coming from, from Sheri.
If this group were formed, is it where Sheri would be an active member of the group?
She could be. And I think, you know, we give the opportunity for admin to dedicate staff and dedicate specific individuals to be a part of this PIG, absolutely.
Capacity for it.
If they do, sure.
I believe Sheri was an integral, remains an integral core member when it has come to the PLT Working Group, as well as a core member when it came to conversations at the legislature regarding lifting that cap of fifteen point one million up to twenty-five million with the prorata share?
Yeah.
So.
You know, to be to your point, right, for the record, these are one dollar a year leases that were executed in nineteen sixty-four. We're not talking a dollar a year, one dollar that was executed almost sixty-five years ago. So e- exactly. And, and you know, there's been a, obviously a change in administration at the federal level. Our congressional delegation, you know, albeit in a minority, you know, they hold important positions on whether it's the Appropriations Committee, Committee or the Armed Services Committee that would be part of any type of future negotiation or whether it is a land exchange or a returning of the lands if the lease is not renewed. But you know, one of the options I think that we would want to avoid is if the federal government is unable to make some type of deal with the state of Hawaii on these leased lands, that the federal government would move to emanate the federal lands, the, the state leased lands in the interest of national security or whatever their national interest would be. And so we want to make sure that we have a seat at the table in those discussions, which is, is always a possibility. And the administration has changed and you know, it's, things are changing in Washington DC every single day. And this administration will be, you know, in charge of the federal government and Department of Defense for at least the next four years, which is the critical time right now when these negotiations are going to be taking place and decisions are going to be made because these leases will expire in 2029. The Pohakula lease expires in 2029. So does the Makua Valley lease. So the state leases 782 acres at Makua Valley, the Army leases from the state of Hawaii. And at Pohakula, it's a little under 23,000 acres that the Army leases from the state of Hawaii. All of those lands are ceded lands, they're former Kingdom of Hawaii lands. They are public trust lands. We should be receiving our prorata share of those lands, but not at a dollar a year, so.
Also to note that throughout up until last year, there was the existence of the Red Hill CRI set of meetings and some of them were hosted here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs right outside here of the boardroom. So contentious at times, but those did happen and then I believe they went to the Ola Lo Studio from there.
Yeah, I mean, I would envision as part of this permitted interactions group work is to also be able to invite US Army Garrison Hawaii here so that they can present to the board on what their, they've developed at least three different preferred options. They have a preferred option specifically for Pohakula. And it'd be good for this board to hear from them. I don't know if that has ever happened before. And, and we can extend that invitation as part of this, this PIG that we will be able to create and, and you know, task it with a specific scope of work, which is outlined in the the end of the proposed action, right? There are, there are specific actions that this PIG should compile and as part of its investigative authorities to get as much information as possible, engage the different relevant stakeholders and then bring information back to this board so that the board can then move forward with how, how OHA should best proceed in these decision-making process that the state is, is doing.
So part of the frustration of those Red Hill CRI meetings was at, at one point, the military stopped attending them. And that was a huge part of the frustration for the community members and stakeholders because they wanted to have the Department of Defense, Defense at the table to be able to present and further explain their side of things and what the plan would be going forward and then that ceased to exist.
You know, I know many of us had a chance to meet several of the military commanders that came to our investiture. The commander of the 25th Infantry Division at Schofield Barracks came. He said he had never been to our investiture before and we had a chance to meet him. And, and they, they are, they want to engage with us and they want to explain to us what their role is in Hawaii and what their future intentions are regarding these leased lands that they deem are critical for their ability to train, organize, train, equip and readiness for, for our military, so. Trustees, any other, I'm sorry. Sure. Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to note, you know, in, in listening to the discussion, you know, there was a 2019 Hawaii Supreme Court decision. It was against the state. And the Hawaii Supreme Court found that the state had breached its trust duties in managing Pohakula because of the destruction and, and uncleaned up ordinances and, and everything else that still remained there. So I, I just want you to, to, to be aware of that moving forward because that's certainly going to be a challenge in dealing with the, the upcoming lease negotiation as to what's the state going to require of the military, given, you know, they've been called out by the Supreme Court that, you know, they're not managing their property the way they're supposed to. So anyway, I just thought I'd share that with you.
And you know, really DLNR is in the driver's seat, right, for this. It's the DLNR's lands, they lease these lands, the land board, Chair Don Chang, you know, they're, they're a critical part of that, but we should be as well. And, and this gives us the opportunity to do that. Trustee Akaka?
Yes, I wanted to get more insight in terms of what the enforcement and end result was with the court's decision for the kuliana of the military to clean it up.
Yeah, so the, the military, I mean, the federal government was not a party to that, that action. It was an action brought against just the state of Hawaii and state court. So the, the state as a landlord with, with trust duties, the Supreme Court found that they failed to properly manage the land that they were leasing at Pohakula because of the destruction to the land. So as far as enforcement, I mean, it's, it's, you know, how does the state at this point address that breach that the Supreme Court found? You know, will it be military has to, if they want a, an extension, will they have to meet certain requirements? I mean, that's all certainly things that are going to be pertinent to future extensions, I would think.
Yeah, to Navy's point, that lawsuit was a lawsuit against the state of Hawaii and DLNR for basically not doing its job as the landowner in terms of holding the lessee accountable for, you know, the types of cleanup and military training that was being done. So that was on DLNR to do that.
I, I would, I would like to see the DLNR, all the stakeholders, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, the governor, Lieutenant Governor, the various county councils that it involves, possibly even DHHL if it's on their part of the land as well, to have a conversation with the military to see how we're going to go forward instead of all these fragmented groups having the same set of conversations but separately for everybody to come to the table on that.
And that sounds like a, you know, by forming a PIG, a good, good way to start, start that ball in motion.
Trustee Lindsay?
Having served on the Kahole Lave Commission, I know full well that the, the federal government did not clean that, that island up. And when they appropriated funds for the cleaning, they gave it to the military to distribute the funds. And then at the very end, when funds ran out, they, they they actually commented that the local people that had the contracts from the Navy used all the money, but that wasn't the case. I, I mean, you know, I, I'd like to think that trustee Suzo can back me up because he's on the commission today. But yeah, they blamed it on the local people using all the money. And every single time I've been to Washington DC for the, our Kamehameha statue, I have asked every congressman, including yourself, for more money to clean Kahole Lave. So this Pohakula thing is going to be a so big deal for cleaning it, you know? Who knows, fifty years from now, we're going to need Pohakula for housing.
Right.
And we can't under the conditions that it is today.
Right.
So it's very critical that you folks do start this PIG and, you know, start the.
Makua Valley is the other one that needs major cleanup.
Well, some of the bombs went over into Hawaiian homestead at Makua.
Trustee Suzo?
Yeah, Mahalo Chair. I want to reemphasize what our board council had said earlier. It just gives, I think, the PIG an opportunity to bring everyone together as well within their scope of work. And as, if anyone had a chance to look at that map of Pohakula and what the military owns, there's also other parcels surrounding it such as Agland. And so as OHA starts to have these conversations about land transfers, I think this is very, very important as we insert ourselves into this conversation, so mahalo.
There's also, you know, there's other groups as well that are involved in these conversations. The Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii has a Military Affairs Council. They recently hosted a event at the Washington Place that military leaders came to, the governor hosted, key stakeholders, stakeholders were invited. OHA was not invited. And we should have been invited. Well, this PIG will this PIG will give us an opportunity to make sure that, that our, you know, that we are taking this very seriously. We have codified using existing law, a, a structure and an entity that can do the investigative work and, and assert ourselves in these conversations. So I think it's a good thing. If we have no further discussion, let's take a vote. Oh, hold on, trustee Akaka.
Yeah, um, some other thoughts when it comes to specifically Pohakula and my own experiences growing up there, driving by there. Now at this point in my life, it is interesting to see reports that the military are stating that they don't clean up the ordinances that, and shellings and so forth after how many decades and the concern of community and what that means for chemicals going into our earth and the concern of the lands upon which they are at is considered high danger area when it comes to species. And even with that wildfire that happened there a couple of years ago and the damage that happened, not just on the surface, but underground as well and for the, the life of the flora and fauna underneath that. So I think that that is something that also needs to be addressed should this permitted interaction group or any commission or group go forward to look at what the damage is to the environment and also to the responsibility to our Hawaiian people and the original purpose of those lands. It was not originally designated to be used for the military and for them to occupy as so and, and look at the cost factor into kuliana as to the damage that has been done and not just the current state, but expected costs of what the long-term damage is for generations to come. Because I, I, I find it very hard to believe that they would deem that land appropriate for those to have homes or businesses or anything there in the, in any near future, given that in our family's experience, the military coming every so many years to check on the land to make sure that there's no ordinances left that might blow up. So a concern of mine is that children playing outside and something happening. Why are we still at this point, you know?
To your point, which is, you know, sometimes goes unnoticed unless you get into the weeds, is for Pohakula, for an example, military use at Pohakula is a non-conforming use. When the lease was signed in nineteen sixty-four, the state's conservation district rules did not exist. When those rules were created, a lease was already in place. And so the ability for the military to do military training is a current non-conforming use, but it is an allowable use because that lease was in place prior to the enactment of the state's current conservation district rules. But when that lease reaches its end of life and for example, it's time to potentially negotiate a new lease, there is no legal mechanism for the state of Hawaii and DLNR to do that because military use is not allowed in the conservation district in that area. So that's another issue that they're working on. They couldn't even issue a lease currently if they wanted to because they would have, the legislature would have to amend the state's conservation district laws to include military activity in that specific area. It's, it's the same concept of Mauna Kea and astronomy. Astronomy is an allowable use in the state's conservation district on the summit of Mauna Kea. That's why you can have telescopes on Mauna Kea. But that doesn't exist at Pohakula. It's currently a non-conforming use when that lease ceases to exist. There's no legal mechanism unless the legislature expands its conservation district rules because that area is conservation district land. So it would require not just a lease, but an amendment to existing law that the legislature would have to take up to even allow the military to remain there and do what it does today. Trustee Kino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to confirm my understanding from the action item of what the scope of the PIG would be. And I see that there are two aspects listed. One is investigatory and number two is to make recommendations to the board as to how we can engage the discourse assumably with the military and the public. And I just want to confirm that that is the limited scope and that the PIG will not be conducting meetings in which it represents OHA to any parties.
Correct, trustee Kino. I think the intention is for the, the PIG to, to engage, to do its work, to do a more investigatory work and bring all that information, synthesize that information, bring it to the board and then decide what the board would want to do. Maybe that PIG then would sunset, cease to exist. We would create a negotiating PIG to then be able to discuss, hey, what is being negotiated and, and ensuring that OHA and our beneficiaries and the public trust is protected in those negotiations.
Good, so the work that the PIG would be. Good. So the, the work that the PIG would be doing uh, will be much appreciated, I, I think. And the members will be working hard on our behalf. Looking forward to that.
Yep. And I'm happy to chair that PIG.
I just wanted to make a comment that um, sorry, I have to recollect the work that we've been doing, but I think the, the work that we have been doing will be a support to kicking off this PIG. As I said, you know, we've done some research on existing leases. Um, we too had discussions about OHA asserting ourselves with uh, DLNR and the governor to be a part of these um, negotiations and started to, you know, we're looking at drafting a letter and um, to send to DLNR. So my point is that I think we have some good starting points. You know, we have some good groundwork for kicking off the PIG and supporting.
Yeah, and we're welcome for, you know, yourself and Kapu Hana to make the recommendations on who should be a part of it. And obviously you guys already got a little bit of a head start. So um, you know, I think just before we take a vote, um, some of us maybe went to the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancements um, convention this past summer. I didn't go, but I had a chance to watch it on, on video and you can watch on video. And they had a really good conversation on this exact subject. And there was uh, one of the panelists was Mahina Paishon. And she asked the question at the end of her presentation, right? Who is representing the native Hawaiian community in this? And she asked the question to a crowd of hundreds in the convention hall and no one answered. We are answering today. We will be that voice for the native Hawaiian community.
I, I remember um, during the Red Hill CRI meetings, I believe um, if it was not Red Hill CRI, it was another group, but I think in that one, uh, when they went to go to the legislature, um, Mehana Hind, who was with CNHA, she was there um, voicing from a Hawaiian perspective as well in terms of um, it's our collective decision to see about the military continuing, doing what they're doing in these lands.
Okay, trustees. Ready to vote? Roll call vote, please. Yep, as proposed in the, in the PIG, um, yes.
Trustee Ahuna has left the meeting. Trustee Akaka? Trustee Akina? Trustee Alapa? Trustee Galuteria? Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahie? Cherkahelle? You have eight yes votes.
Okay, thank you trustees. Okay, we're now moving on to what should be our last item on the agenda. It is agenda item number twenty-five zero-one, which is continuing the discussion we had, the last board meeting, which I thought was very productive. Uh, we incorporated um, many of your suggestions. And thank you Everett and the team for redrafting uh, our bylaws and uploading it for not just our trustees, but the um, general public to review. And so the action item is a revision to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees bylaws relating to the establishment of board vice chairpersons and chair emerita, emeritus position, succession of a board officer and committee chairperson, approval of committee agendas by the committee chairperson, requirements for meeting presentations and testifiers and miscellaneous revisions for consistency and clarity. Again, trustees, this is the first reading of the proposed revision to our bylaws. It requires a super majority vote of the board, six votes, to move to its second reading, of which then it would be um, before the board for uh, final approval and adoption again with a super majority vote of the board, uh, which if it moves out of um, this board's action today, it would be scheduled for final reading and final adoption at the Thursday, February twentieth board meeting. So at this time, who do we have anyone um, that is wishing to testify on this item?
We have one person online. Uh, we have Jermaine Myers. And Jermaine, I apologize, I'm trying to promote you as a panelist for the last minute. Um, and it, you won't move. Can you hear me?
Okay, I see Jermaine's hand up and I see Jermaine on. Hi Jermaine. You know, while we're waiting for the IT thing, why don't we ask for a motion and a second, then we can bring it to the table and then we can hand it to Everett to do a quick update. So can I get a motion on action item twenty-five zero-one? Okay, we have a motion by trustee Souza, second by trustee Alapa. So now we'll move to board discussion until we can get Jermaine um, online. And don't worry Jermaine, if you can hear us, we'll, we'll get, give you the opportunity to um, present your five minutes to the board. But at this time, we'll recognize Everett to go over some of the updates that you had captured based on our most recent meeting.
Yes, thank you Chair, uh, and good afternoon trustees. Uh, so this uh, matter of, the action item is back before the board for further discussion. Um, the uh, the bylaws were further revised based on this board's discussion uh, at our prior meeting. Uh, and it's to uh, remove uh, well, to make additional revision.
Hi Jermaine, just stand by one second. We're doing uh, an update by Everett and then we'll come back to you if that's okay.
Awesome, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks Jermaine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so revisions were made to the vice chair positions uh, to have uh, the vice chair uh, be designated by the uh, by the board uh, to uh, take on or assume the duties of the chairperson. Um, that was based again on feedback, um, you know, to have that be a board vote rather than a designation by the chairperson. Uh, the other revisions was to remove the uh, change to the testimony length. Uh, so it's back to five minutes as provided for in our existing bylaws. Uh, the other revision is to the uh, staff, uh, particularly the chief of staff position. Um, that is to remove those um, the language that had been proposed uh, that um, was um, caused concern at this board that there was a change in the responsibilities of the chief of staff. Uh, so that language was removed and it reverted back to, you know, remove the daily, the reference to um, management of daily uh, operations um, of the trustees offices. Um, so that language uh, reverted back and uh, there was also clarifying language added to the trustee aide, trustee secretary section uh, that specifically mentions uh, oversight or direct reporting uh, of those respective trustee aides to their uh, respective trustees. Um, there was also an addition uh, made uh, to add a deputy chief of staff at the request of the chair. Um, provide uh, an option for that position, um, if the chair of the board so chooses. Um, and I believe that covers the revisions otherwise, um, except as I just covered uh, in my summary, the revisions that were previously proposed uh, remain. Uh, but those were the main areas, uh, sections that were uh, uh, revised based on the board's discussion at our last meeting.
Okay, thanks Everett. Let's um, let's recognize Jermaine now so she can give her five minutes. Aloha Jermaine, you are recognized.
Aloha Chair, thank you. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm on Mauna Kuleh Hawaiian Homestead, Lesi. Thank you for this opportunity. I reviewed the revisions and my pri, my main concern has to do with what you guys were just talking about on the PIG. When it, and as it compares to the bylaws changes. So with the bylaw changes, I saw that a deputy chief of staff was added. So now there's gonna be three staff members under the chair in addition to the two aides. Then also part of today's proposal is again to continue on with asking for a second vice chair. My confusion stems by the fact that all of the paid, the positions are paid with the trust funds. So we've got at the legislature where OHA's trustees will receive raises. Is being proposed for OHA's trustees to receive raises. And then we also have um, additional staff members being asked to be created deputy chief of staff in addition to the chief of staff, paid positions. My concern is that when I just listened to all the delic, uh, the discussion about the PIG, the vice chair of the board, Cher Souza, will also be on the PIG. Chair Kaikahelle of the BOT is also gonna be on the PIG. Vice Chair Souza is also a chair of the ILM. So why are we creating a second vice chair if we're not using the trustees that we're paying for that is sitting on the board such as trustee Akaka, trustee Hulu and trustee Ahuna and trustee Akina? They're not being assigned to the PIG, but then the bylaw changes are, we need more help. We need more help in the board. We need another dep, we need a deputy chief of staff. We need a potential second vice chair. So that's where my concern stems from. We're having trustees that are not being used for the PIG, but then the people that are already in leadership are being used at the PIG. So how are they gonna find the time to do second uh, a vice chair position of the BOT of a chair of the committee? And then in addition, you're asking for new paid positions under the BOT such as a deputy chief of staff. These are just my concerns and I hope that everybody else in, you know, the Lahui, I will share that with my neighborhood board about my concerns of more trust monies being bleated out and yet we've got trustees that are sitting idle because the leadership and the delegation of duties are not being shared evenly by everyone. I mean, we elected all of you, we, you guys are all getting paid by trust funds, but yet um, you know, it's being hoarding all of these duties and responsibilities, but then we need help and then you create another position instead of using the trustees and each of their two aides. So these are my concerns. Kel, Kuapu, God bless all of you.
Thanks so much Jermaine for your testimony. The hoodoo, if anyone else online? Okay. Trustee Lindsay?
I just wanna say that when I was the chair, the leadership did the PIG as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Trustees, discussion? I think, you know, while contemplating, um, and, and we will also be going into executive session because um, our board council has some things that he'd like to share. I think they're important. The opportunity to update our bylaws is, I think, something we should do annually. As a general rule of thumb, you know, at least take a good, you know, good solid look at it. Um, and I think the things that we're, we're proposing as, as a board, I think is a good thing. I think it allows um, strategic investments into this board. It allows us to build internal leadership capacity and develop future leaders within our organization. There was, yeah, I'll just kinda leave it at that, but I'm happy to uh, take any other questions or if anyone has any other discussions. Hopefully, I know we had a very spirited discussion on the staff and, and, and down to specific keywords. I think um, all of your concerns were um, addressed in the revision and so trustee Kino? No, I'm done, yeah.
Well, tha- thank you for inviting some comments. First of all, I wanted to express my appreciation for your commitment to updating the bylaws. That's something that is a bit overdue and this will bring us up to date. Secondly, I appreciate the strategic use of bylaws that you're demonstrating in order to accomplish our mission. Um, I'm, I'm grateful that there was some clarification on the role of the chief of staff with respect to the trustee aides. And I, I just wanna clarify to make sure I understand this on page thirty-nine of the revision. A at the top with respect to chief of staff. The chief of staff shall manage all operations and staff of the board chairpersons' Oahu and island offices if applicable, while coordinating the chairperson's activities with other trustees offices. Then I'm looking at this. Additionally, the chief of staff is responsible for coordinating trustee aide and secretary staff functions and activities and shall be the liaison between board and the administrator. Now, does this reference to the chief of staff coordinating trustee aide and secretary staff functions refer to the chair's trustee aides and secretary? That would make sense. That would be consistent with.
It does, and, and that language is verbatim from what we currently have. Which is our existing bylaw. So we, we basically went back to, to that.
That's fine. Thank you. That takes into consideration the discussion that we had here. Which, which reinforces the role of the individual trustee in managing his own trustee aides. Thank you.
Trustee Wahie?
I, I realized there was a part of the bylaw I wanted to change that um, hadn't been, um, that you guys hadn't thought of changing. And I'm not sure.
Which page is it on?
It's on page twenty-nine. I, I'm not sure if it qualifies under the, the way um, the agenda describes um, this, this uh, action item. Maybe, maybe it, it might, it might be able to qualify under miscellaneous really vivid, uh, miscellaneous revision. But if you, if I may, and I, I can explain why I hate this uh, bylaw. But it's, it's the under uh, twenty-nine, under um, H forum and voting for committees, councils and commissions. H four, um, it says, um, when standing committees meet jointly, each committee shall vote separately as individual committees. Um, I hate it. I hate that because it's a pain to deal with, uh, first of all. Secondly, it's not necessary um, under our current uh, on, on, on two occasions, on two occasions, I got, I got, um, the board has gotten, uh, I, I got opinions, uh, the first, when we first, when we first formed the, um, we, we, we first formed the two committees um, from five to two, uh, they, they had a joint committee. And, and you're gonna want, and um, and like at the time Judge Klein uh, ruled that under our parliamentary procedures, if the committees were the same members, we wouldn't need to uh, um, vote individually, um, vote as individual committees if they're the same members in a joint committee. And the reason why I remember this vividly is because initially when we had a joint committee, they realized, oh, we don't know how we're supposed to, how to vote on this. Let's just vote twice for each person. And they was, they said, uh, they're all voting like yes and yes, yes and yes. And then I thought it's just so dumb. So I voted, because I was younger, I voted yes and no. And then at the very next meeting, they had a, an opinion ready saying, oh yeah, you guys don't need to vote twice, um, you know? On a separate occasion in two thousand and eighteen, uh, we had a, we had a, a part, uh, what do you call it? The thing that Brendan Lee does, a parliamentarian. We had an actual parliamentarian come and train us on stuff. Um, and, and any questions we had, and I asked, under Robert's rules, if the standing committees meet jointly and they're the same members in each, do we have to vote twice? I mean, I mean, vote separately. And she said, no, you guys can, you guys can just vote one time. So if I could, I wanna just get rid of this entire number completely.
Everett said something before we make a motion on, I mean, a proposed amendment? Is that something that would fall within the guidelines of miscellaneous? Think so?
I guess, uh, if, I mean, I'd also, you know, welcome board council's opinion. I guess uh if, I mean, I'd also, you know, welcome board council's opinion on it.
How will we recognize board council?
I mean, yeah, I also, I mean, I don't, well, if you wanted to proceed.
I, I think it's, I think it would, I think it would fall under um miscellaneous revisions for consistency. Uh, certainly, uh meet that description that's agendized. And again, this is just first reading, so.
Proposed amendment. Do you want to propose the amendment?
To amend, well, the, the by, uh, the proposed bylaws um uh in action item twenty-five oh-one to amend it to remove um item.
Four?
Item H, H four, and just, and just uh remove it completely, page twenty-nine.
Ken? Yep, that'll be under quorum and voting for committees, councils and commissions.
So they would, uh, I think the full citation would be article eight, section H, subpart four. And that to strike in its entirety.
Yep.
Yep, that's.
A second? Thank you, trustee Souza. Okay. Any discussion on that? If not, I'm thinking we'll go into executive session? Okay.
I just having co-chaired meetings with our then RM chair, Wahee. I do recall, I don't recall the exact language, but something along the lines of when it came to voting and Everett, you could probably help me on this, when it came to voting. Uh, when we were jointly meeting, it, it was um explained and then stated that you can, believe, vote concurrently. So you, that vote would go cover both committees at that time. And so maybe this is John, do you? Wait, 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 should I turn your, somebody got a release to.
No, we're, we're, I'd have to at some point um get permission from whoever the other chairperson was to, to be allowed to vote concurrently rather than just do it.
Yeah.
And then it was uh.
Whoever was chairing the meeting. Had to give permission to the other.
The other. A gift home.
Was sharing.
Take care of that, right?
Take care of that, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Galutaria?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, you know, obviously I'm doing the virtual thing, so I won't be able to attend the executive session. But I was hoping that in your conversations with uh the board council with regard to some of the bylaws, especially the provision that, that adds one more vice chair, if he could be clear on, on how that works and what the rationale is to add another uh vice chair to the board. And, you know, you could clear, you could um, um fill me in on that later on. But I just wanted to throw that on the table so that it's covered by Naevi uh in your discussions in executive session, okay?
Yes, we'll do, trustee Galutaria.
Malo.
I.
And I think we're gonna try and, and uh have you be a part of the executive session is what I'm told. So if you, if you just stay connected, I think we can make that happen.
Yeah, just the minutes part won't be in front of him because that will be shared amongst the board, but he can certainly sit in the executive session virtually.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So at this time, we have a second on the executive session and let us go into that. Does that require? Gavol?
So I, I'll do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay.
So who?
Okay, I'm sorry. Discussion for executive session.
By way of discussion, just a quick question. Uh, is it necessary for us to have our trustee aides leave for this executive session? In terms of the.
Yes.
Content, okay.
Thank you for asking. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote? Trustee Souza made and trustee Lindsay seconded.
Okay, trustee Ahuna has left the meeting. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina? Trustee Alapa? Trustee Lindsay? Thank you. Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Souza? Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Cher Kahele?
Aye.
We have eight yes votes. We will be moving into executive session.